Welcome to a joint general government subcommittee town council meeting Tuesday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. At six forty seven P M in the veterans meeting room. Meeting is called to order. Uh second item is roll call. Councillor Shanier.
Here.
Councillor Dow is absent. Citizen member Clemens.
Present.
Citizen member Julian.
If you could, if you could excuse him, he did text me, he was anybody.
Okay, citizen member Julian is excused. Um and we have a quorum. Agenda item number one, three rather, uh is re- review discuss the confirmation of the town manager's appointment of John Zuda to the airport commission for a three year term effective July first, twenty twenty five through June thirty, twenty twenty eight. Pending successful completion of state ethics, entertain a motion to recommend approval to the town council for confirmation.
So.
Second. Sugar.
Right. So, um I had reviewed this with Chairman Rick Clemens, uh on the airport, uh John is well known to the town. He's a be a good fit up there. Rick wel- welcomes his appointment to the airport commission. Originally, this is gonna fill the resignation of George Tentrill. George Tentrill. Uh who had.
He's done?
He had resigned.
Oh.
So originally this was gonna be effective immediately till twenty twenty seven, but because we're so close to July first, it's just gonna be a three year term, so I recommend his appointment and that would fill up that commission.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Oh.
Great addition.
All in favor? Item number four. Review and discuss the confirmation of the town manager's reapportment of Richard Clemens to the airport commission for a three year term effective July first, twenty twenty five until June thirty, twenty twenty eight. State ethics in good standing entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for confirmation.
So.
Rick does a lot at the airport and recommends his reapportment.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
If for the record, if I'm Minister Sherry, uh that is my brother-in-law, but I previously sent documents to say that I'm not, uh he'll have any problems with that.
Thank you.
No conflict.
Um. Item number five. Review discuss confirming the town manager's reapportment of Sarah Maguire as parking ticket clerk for a one year term effective July fir- first, twenty twenty five through June thirty, twenty twenty six. State ethics in good standing entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for confirmation.
So.
Second.
Sarah's our assistant tax collector. That position typically does the parking ticket clerks at the adherence for parking ticket, so.
Who took over the hearings from Evelyn?
Uh Maddie.
Maddie? Okay.
Maddie and I both. Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Three zero. Item number six, review discuss confirming the town manager's appointment of Caitlin Jewell as parking enforcement officer for a one year term effective July first, twenty twenty five until June thirty, twenty twenty six. State ethics in good standing entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for confirmation.
So.
Second.
Caitlin serves as the annual patrol officer, annual inspector, and the chief obviously appoints her as a one term, one year every year as a parking enforcement officer.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Zero. Item number seven, review discuss the confirmation of the town manager's reapportment of Tracy Pallone to the board of registers for a three year term effective July first, twenty twenty five until June thirty, twenty twenty eight. State ethics in good cha- standing entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for confirmation.
So.
Second.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh typically there's two, a Republican and a Democrat. I'm not sure what party she's from, but it's a reapportment of her as a one of the registers. John Sipick is the other one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Zero. Item number eight, review discuss a town accountant transfer in the amount of two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars from council reserve account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero to special appropriation. G A S B O P E B actuarial study account number zero zero three one three five dash five eight nine nine zero zero dash nine zero seven two. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So.
Second.
So we have to do a study every year. Um this was the biannual, um larger one, where we had under budgeted services to fund the rest of that.
What kind of study?
O P E B, uh other post-employment benefits that were the liability that we have, so. The unfortunate liability that we have. This just gets us where we're at, how much we have. And I cannot give you the number right.
I was, I was wondering.
I think it was like twenty one million in the last audit, so it's gone down quite a bit.
Oh, well that's, that's gone, yeah, wasn't it close to forty at one time?
Yeah. It was like close to forty, yeah.
That was kinda, that's right.
So.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? Three zero. Item number nine, review and discuss a town accountant department of public works transfer request in the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars from account number zero zero one four nine five dash five two nine zero zero zero. Snow and ice specialized services to account number zero zero one four nine five dash five one three one zero zero, snow and ice overtime. Entertain a mo- motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So.
Second.
Alright, just before we go through all of them, you'll see a number of these, a town accountant D P W, town accountant police, town accountant other department. Um last week, we really went through any account that may have had a shortfall, so to anticipate, so we could close any accounts with a, without a negative balance before June thirtieth. Uh that's why they're all coming here to general government as opposed to having a D P W, um that just transfers to clean the books, because I do not, we do not have the authority to just transfer to any remaining monies and budgets, so that's why it's here, general, it's no slight on any other, um subcommittee, it was just to efficiency, that was done. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item number ten, review and discuss a town accountant treasurer collective transfer request in the amount of uh one, one thousand five hundred dollars from account number zero zero one one four five dash five three four one zero zero advertising promotions to account number zero zero one one four five dash five three four two zero zero, print special forms. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So.
Second.
This is just, uh, cost of printed tax bills, we ran a little short this year, so.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Three zero. Item number eleven, review and discuss a town accountant police department transfer request in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars from account number zero zero one two one zero dash five one one zero zero zero. Salary to account number zero zero one two one zero dash five two one zero 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 electricity. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So.
Second.
So as we've discussed in prior meetings, the electricity has been a moving target all year with the loss of some solar credits because the solar farms were down. I explained this before, um this original amount at one time earlier in the year was at like thirty three thousand, we thought we're gonna have to transfer. We waited till as soon as we could to get, because the solar farm credits are starting to accumulate again. We also had the Z net metering that we adjust in budgets, so we're all in the process of balancing all that out, but, um we were able to get this down from a larger number to the twenty five thousand.
Excuse me.
So, uh solar ferals were down, but you just give us, give the synopsis on this.
The, the solar farms, they're, they had a like, uh, um a production issue that they were, were not unable to produce solar because they had a problem with, um a, a huge maintenance issue that they have, so then they, um, activated a clause of force majeure that was beyond their control.
Hmm. Are you serious?
So, yeah, so therefore they used force majeure, no longer credits because it wasn't generating credits, and until they got back up.
But we couldn't argue that it was their poor maintenance that caused the problem?
I believe it was, it was bigger than just the maintenance, there was a fire that happened, it wasn't just a maintenance issue, it was a fire.
But it was negligence that caused the fire?
Uh that I haven't gone down to though.
Because now we're paying for something, they're still on our land and they didn't have to pay us anything?
Uh these are credits that we purchased.
Oh, these are the, okay, this isn't the.
These are the ones that we purchased, yeah, it's not the solar farms that we get the pilots from, those we get piled, we purchase credits.
Sorry. But we purchased them, we purchased them, so then we still had an investment in them.
Yeah, so we purchased the credits and
Right, I just.
It's a very complicated formula that I still have not had time to really understand.
Right.
But I do know that the credits are starting to accumulate again.
Right.
And we had some accounts that had a lot of credits and some that had
Right, and you can.
not enough, and we can move it, and you can only move it during certain periods of time.
Right.
So we just finished all that balancing, so, uh, accountant has worked on it to balance them out, so we're cleaning everything up for this year and hopefully we'll be in a better fit next year.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate because, you know, that, that's.
It was helping a lot at one time, it was a good thing, yeah, remember that, it just bugs me that if there was a negligence at all at all.
Yeah, it does, yeah, yeah, it does, yeah. Yeah.
But okay, but thank you though for explaining, I'm sorry, maybe there's other people out there like me who didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's a couple of accounts, there's a library one that had one, the electricity.
Yeah, I saw a lot of those, I was wondering where, this is.
Community center, that's what it is, that's what I'm.
Okay, good to know.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item number twelve, review and discuss a town, town accountant transfer request in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars from account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero, town council reserve to account number zero zero one nine one zero five one seven one zero zero, retirement assessment. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So.
Second.
They notified us that we had to pay additional forty five hundred dollars, so which we may have to pay in the retirement assessment of forty five hundred dollars.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item number thirteen, review and discuss a town accountant transfer request in the amount of thirty dollars from account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero. Town council reserve to account number zero zero one seven one zero dash five nine one five zero zero. Interest on long-term debt, entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So.
Second.
We missed our estimate by thirty bucks for interest on long-term debt, so we have to transfer it.
They're telling.
I bet a budget in, I know. But yeah, that's what we're at. Okay.
Any further discussion? Not all, all those in favor, three zero.
How come you just can't take, if I may?
Well.
How come you just can't, like thirty bucks, all this hassle for it, there's not a way of just you as a manager being able to have a follow-up, and I know we've talked about these transfers before.
Very nice to be able to just say, at the end of the year, come out and give you a detailed report about reasons why and things.
I, I think we, I, yeah, I think we need to have some
Maybe you can get that changed in the charter.
Some authorization in the charter of, or the.
I was, so I mean.
I'm not saying thousands of dollars, but you know, anything under five hundred bucks, say.
Mm-hmm.
Donate yours, Clemens.
Beaten to death and then some, and you have to have a council, a council willing to make changes like that and to give up some of that control. And speaking of changes to the town manager, in the charter, if you read the report that we produced way back, there was, there was a great line that reverted back to what the charter was a number of years back in terms of what the manager, and then we added an addendum to that. So we were gonna allow some of those, those, um, uh responsibilities, whatever, uh, to the manager again, but there was going to, there was an amendment to that in order to make it more um accountable to the council and to everybody else, like quarterly reports or whatever, so you could catch any kind of things, any kind of, if you, if you saw a trend, something going on, why is there so many transfers, you would know, because you would have a report done and you could easily bring that up. But council did not wanna allow the manager to have that type of, uh, authority, and so instead you sit here for thirty bucks or two dollars, um, because you can't do transfers, so it's better to.
Council's proposals is information, I donate it, I don't, we still have to go to council for approval.
I'll let you do it.
So it's, it's, it's an interesting, uh, thing here, but, um.
Maybe it's something we can work on.
You can, go for it, I love you.
I don't, I don't have a fourteen. Review and discuss a town accountant police department transfer request in the amount of thirty five hundred dollars from account number zero zero one two one zero dash five one one zero zero zero. F T salary to account number zero zero one two one zero five eight five three zero zero communications equipment. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So.
Second.
The chief had some unanticipated, uh, repairs to his radio system and, uh, ran short on the money, so it's a transfer for that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item number fifteen. Review and discuss a town accoun- accountant transfer request in the amount of thirty five thousand dollars from, from account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero, town council reserve to account number zero one nine zero 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 dash five three four three zero zero, admin postage. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So.
Second.
Uh, this one kills me about how we had to spend that much on postage. We do have the postage accounting machine, but we have to remember that we had to send out all the tax title, um, paperwork that we did for all the takings that we did. We had the additional, um, funds that were budgeted in the right line item for curbside, because we have the addition of those billings. We also have, uh, all the paperwork that we're sending out for all the properties that we took. So those are multiple billings that are all certified mail, return receipt. Um, so it is a lot of money and we are looking to make sure that we balance out that account. We did the same, last year was the same issue and, um, we have to get a better handle on postage. Um, the school also uses that machine, but they didn't take it out of our account and reimburse us, but thi- this postage was unbelievable. At one time they had it at like fifty thousand and I said, you really have to do a better analysis of this, I'm not just giving carte blanche. Um, so it runs because we have water, sewer billing, curbside billing, that added four, uh, four billings.
Oh, selections too, right?
Elections, yes, as well, so.
Clemens.
Thank you, um, but don't we get money from, I mean, aren't you expensing that to the, those accounts in some way? I mean sewer, uh, trash, I mean, isn't.
They did not put a line item, that historically the town has not put a line item in those sewer enterprise accounts, so there's gonna be an increase in the water sewer bills. I mean rates because of, that's one of the things that was not put to those individual accounts.
Right, to that point, you're not talking a ton of money for the money, people like water, thirty five divided by all the monies that it's.
No, no, but you add curbside, that's for forty five, you know, we.
Well, right, what I'm saying. Yeah, but you just said, so water bills, the postage that's for water bills should go to the water bills and the postage for sewer should go to.
It should, and that's not the way it had been historically budgeted in the past, it should be.
I get it, but that's, that's the, the proper accounting way.
It, it is, yes.
Yeah, but it's credit and all that.
Yes, and we understand that, yes, it will be adjusted in the.
Right. But to say we're gonna get a, we're gonna sewer increase because of a thousand dollars of postage, right?
Well, no, that's, no, 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 I'm not saying that, but that is gonna be part when the rates come up, because you have inflation, you have the postage, you have electricity.
But it's just a. Yeah.
I'm just saying when somebody says, why did it go up?
Mm-hmm.
These all contribute to rates going up.
Right. Oh, yeah, a- and I still feel a personal bit, uh, with you.
I'm not happy with this postage thing, it's been a, a crutch of
Yeah, that just doesn't make sense.
It doesn't, it does not make sense to me, how, but they did a, a detailed analysis as to number of bills, what the rate is,
And.
uh, and all that, we don't, we do bulk rate, so they did run the whole number of bills, because I said, you, you better show me where this is, because you have the postage machine, you know, itself, and it does meter everything, and Francine keeps track of all those meters. So she had a whole detailed report that came out that said, this is what it is, I said, you gotta prove this to me, because I'm not just transferring, I said, I look, I put on the other hat as a former council girl, I would, I would say, why the hell am I spending that much on postage?
Okay, so this is a transfer for, for what we didn't have, how much was the line?
Overall?
Yeah.
I can get that number, I don't know if.
You know what I'm saying, like, do you mean?
And it was, it was, it was expensive, it's like, why would.
What was you, what was it budgeted for?
Oh, what was it, oh, yeah.
You know, like what were you budgeted for and maybe you didn't have the money, so that's really, you add it together and.
Yeah. Right. I, I can grab a spreadsheet, but yeah, it was, it, it was, I, I said, you really have to, really have to.
Yeah. Or did you unfortunately, unfortunately reduce it too much because we thought it was too high to be dealing with, but it's really not.
Yeah.
I'd be curious what other communities spend on postage.
Yeah, but, yeah, but this isn't something that we have a plan on place to try to curb because of.
Yeah. Right, but I mean, maybe it's normal, we don't know that.
To me, that's a lot of wanting to, to go out.
Yes, maybe it's normal, we don't know that, but I'd be curious what other communities are doing about what, or what they're, what is costing them, and is there some way to curb it?
Yeah. Yeah. Curb costs, right, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Curb it, uh, you know, the curve, um, okay, I think that was, you said something else that, uh, I was gonna say, no. Oh, I think our, as, as much as I would love water and sewer to be less money, like most people would, I, I also still feel that, you know, a three hundred dollar bill for three months or three fifty bill for three months or whatever, you know, if, if you're in three to four hundred range, there you pay a lot more for your TV and your cell phones and your, I think flush, flushing toilets and good drinking water is priceless. And so I, you know, and I've always believed that, my time on council and all, I, you know, when we didn't raise the bills for ten years and then it was a giant jump. And then we charged sewer and water, you know, differently and suddenly it was a lot more money, but it's still just, it's, it's a, it's something, you know? It's, we're lucky that we have good water, so, okay, get off my horse.
Any further discussion on item fifteen? No, all those in favor? Item number sixteen. Review and discuss a town accountant transfer request in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero, town council reserve to account number zero zero three one three five dash five eight nine nine zero zero dash eight one two one, ambulance billing services. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So.
So, second.
This is due to the ever increasing number of ambulance calls, that's the billing service that.
Oh, so that's, that's how that works.
Goes by number of ambulance billing.
So we don't have a co- a, a contract for that amount of dollars?
No, it goes by the number of bills that go up, so the more calls that you have to bill, the more that's gonna go up.
Is it, is it time to look at a contract for?
A set contract, I don't know if there's any, to be honest with you, there's very few ambulance billing companies out there that do the ambulance billing.
Set.
I, I mean, we could certainly look at it and see if there's a state contractor or whatever, but, so just for the billing, so they were, they're in the, the, uh, run report.
Mm-hmm.
Then we ship that off to the billing service and they do all the coding and make sure that the bills are and get the bills out and recoup the money, so.
Coatings.
There was.
We always run short on this because every year our ambulance services go up.
Clemens.
So in the past, um, we had issues with the billing company at one time, not collecting.
Right.
Do we, do we have a percentage of how well this col- uh, company does for us? I mean, if we're paying the more, are we getting a return on our, a good return on our investment, so to speak, you know, the same?
I know, uh, Dean had requested that information, I could get that for you and send it over to you.
That's something that we used to get, like yearly, because to justify it.
I, I know, we, we did, yeah, we did, we did request what, what it was. You know, for us to hire somebody to do our own billing would be too expensive, we're supposed to do it, so, yes, so, you know, we, we had talked about too, we had talked about, um,
No, no, right. Because it's a collection system.
Dean have talked to the chief about the collectibles, what's uncollectible, what could we conceivably collect?
Mm-hmm.
And then with Medicare, you can't go and collect from people, you know, you only get that certain amount, so there's, there's very few that you chase.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And then the talk was, do we hire a debt collector firm to go out and collect debt, so, you know?
Right.
Because we had a couple of issues with certain people that didn't pay rent for a place, and we were talking about, can we get, you know, a bill collector to, to do that? So we've talked about that, but I, I could get that for such a short.
Yeah, I was just, I'm sorry.
Another issue was, you talked about is Medicare, and if you code it wrong, or if the call isn't coded correctly to the diagnosis
Mm-hmm.
of the ambulance. They, they reject it, right, it rejects it, sometimes it takes multiple billings
Mm-hmm.
to collect, I think they collect three hundred and twenty five dollars, I think, on a basic call. My ambulance ride to West was sixteen thousand dollars, medic- Medicare paid six hundred bucks and their company was off the rest, because I'm a Medicare person.
Mm.
So they, they agree, if you want Medicare, you have to agree to their terms, you don't even get to set the terms. Now, we collected, I mean, it wasn't like one point four million, it billed around four million.
Well. Yeah. That's because of Medicare, well, just to talk about ambulance billing, right, you're, you're right, and that's why when we talk about
Right.
a private service company, you're not gonna have it because of the payer mix.
Right.
Well.
Right, but so.
It's another question for them.
You're never gonna collect what, what, what they bill anyway, because those, those bills are, those bills, like all medical bills, they're really fake bills.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, you want people to actually pay those bills in, in full, the people that don't have insurance, okay? Um, so, um.
But I just, I just wanted to ask, it's fifteen thousand over what current, what you budgeted for, you budgeted based on previous, previous savings?
Right. Previous years, yeah, and we actually had increased that too.
Right, and they're saying that that money is strictly from increased runs.
April, May, June, hit, quarter.
And you have the, so you have a data from, because of the federal government always produces how many runs, so you can actually see that.
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious about, uh, if they're, you know, suddenly leasing us a little bit more, but you're not, uh, legitimate.
No, I, no, it's, because it's a per bill, so.
Right. Yeah, but I mean, maybe they started calculating that differently, like every time I send a bill, three times the guy didn't pay, I'm just gonna charge him more, I don't know, just, just checking, okay, thanks. It's, uh.
Any further discussion on this item? Not all those in favor?
It's just, you know, some of these, like, it, this could be like, it's only eleven thousand, but they transfer in fifteen thousand, just so they, you know,
Mm-hmm, just a piece.
And anything above that, even like postage, whatever's above will close out to free cash.
Mm-hmm.
So they kind of, okay, I have enough money to transfer, let's get a little bit of buffer, so you, you know, not transfer into the, you know, kids' third throats and all that.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
All right, item number seventeen, review and discuss a town accountant transfer request in the amount of six hundred and seventy five dollars from account number zero zero one one three five dash five three zero zero zero, specialized services to account number zero zero one one three five dash five seven one one zero zero. Conference and meetings, entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So.
Second.
Yeah, this is the accounting office, we have some new employees, so we're sending them to some additional training, which we send to Abrams and, um, other accountant training, specialized training.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three zero. Item number eighteen, review and discuss a town accountant sewer transfer request in the amount of fifty five thousand dollars from account number six zero zero four four zero dash five eight three zero 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 dash five nine five zero zero. Sewer reserve fund to account number six zero zero four four zero dash five two zero one zero zero, maintenance operating. Entertain a motion to recommend to the co- town council for approval.
So.
Second.
So this is the way the bills were set up, they used to be within the operating, um, within the normal operations bill, now they've separated out to maintenance, um, we didn't have that in, in that line item, so it's just, we've adjusted it for next year's budget. So we're go- because we have the new, uh, Jacobs, so there's a different way of billing for the maintenance, so now that we're in a new, uh, we have it built up for next year to account adequately for the maintenance costs. But this is all within the sewer enterprise fund, so it's not, I mean, it's just reallocation into a different line from the reserve. Because we got, we upped that reserve last year from a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand and underfunded other line items until we got the new contract. So now that we have the new contract, we have a better baseline where those funds are supposed to go.
So I, that was, my, my comment was gonna be, this is staying within the sewer enterprise fund, like, since, because the way you read it, it's, you know, sewer reserve
Yes, mm-hmm.
and then it's maintenance operating, it doesn't say sewer, you know, sewer maintenance operating, it kind of just.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's also, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's one of the, well, I get it, but from an average person looking at that, that's written, yeah.
Yeah, no, I get you, yeah, but it is, yeah, if you just look at six zero zero four four zero, that's.
I saw that first one, yeah.
That's, that's the, uh, that's the sewer fund.
That's a, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh-huh. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Three zero. Item number nineteen. Review and discuss a town accountant water transfer request in the amount of twenty two thousand dollars from the following accounts. From account number six one zero four five zero dash five three eight nine zero zero, management fee fifteen thousand dollars to account six one zero four five zero dash five two one zero zero zero, electricity twenty two thousand dollars. From account number six one zero four five zero dash five two four two hundred, data processing, seven thousand dollars. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
So, second.
Okay, discussion.
So it's increasing cost of electricity based with the solar credits, this all goes back to the whole balance and a by Z credits and solar credits. And this is all within the water enterprise fund alone, so it's just a movement of monies within the water enterprise fund, so.
I, uh, I apparently read this wrong when I read it, I, I should've, I read the line across and I should've read the two accounts into account, account number, s- so.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Uh, in, into account number six, uh, fifty-two one hun- thousand, so, anyway, um, so it's a total of twenty-two thousand dollars going into the
Mm-hmm.
into that account from the management fee account and the data processing.
Yeah.
Fifty-one, mm-hmm.
Alright. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three zero. Item number twenty, review and discuss a town accountant transfer request in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the following. From account number zero zero one four nine nine dash five one one zero zero zero, full-time salary amount twenty-five thousand dollars to account number zero zero one four nine nine dash five two one zero 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 dash zero four two five. Electricity town hall, amount twelve thousand dollars. To account number zero zero one four nine nine dash five two one zero 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 dash zero four nine nine, electricity DPW, thirteen thousand dollars. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
Oh, second.
Electricity.
Okay.
And this is all within the DPW because we did have vacancies within the DPW, so we had money in the salary account to do that, and, uh, the, the electricity for town hall does come out of that DPW budget and go on the line item there. Although I think if you remember, in this year's budget, we moved all electricity to a, uh, one centralized account that's gonna be managed from, uh, from our office. So it's not within ev- every individual department now, it'll be one, you know, like, just like streetlights and all those, it's now just town hall.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're working to move some of those, like natural gas, we've also moved to just a administration account.
Hmm.
So it's some, so every account has a sub-count, so you have electricity, total five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And each line item will be budgeted out, allocated out, but it's one account, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three zero. Item number twenty-one, review and discuss a finance directed transfer request in the amount of one hundred and three thousand dollars, nine hun- one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents from salary reserve account to the following, from account number zero zero one nine one zero dash five one nine one zero zero, salary reserve amount, one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents to account number zero zero one one four five dash five one one zero zero zero, salary treasury collections amount s- thirty-six thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. To account zero zero one two four zero dash five one one zero zero zero, salary inspections, amount sixty-two thousand dollars. To account number zero zero one one six one dash five one one zero zero zero, salary town clerk, amount five thousand dollars. To account number zero zero one one four five dash five one one six hundred, parking clerk salary, twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Oh, second.
So, the memo attached, it outlines, these are positions that were created or trained during the budget adoption last year.
Mm-hmm.
We made it through the end of the year and then just doing the balancing out of that salary reserve account that we had.
Sure.
We had budgeted it already, we had budgeted these positions, we had approved those positions last year, it was just an accounting.
So, I mean.
Yes, mhm.
He ran for inspection, sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's one person or?
Yeah, one person, it was Teddy, that was a brand-new position.
Okay.
I was a building commissioner that the town council voted to hi- hire, so we got the salary reserve for that. And then it was offset, that's not his total salary, it's offset because we have CDPG monies that we pay the assistant building commissioner out.
That's what I'm saying.
So that, that's just a balance, and that's why we had it up, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any further discussion on this matter? If not, all those in favor? Three zero. Okay, item number twenty-two, adjourned.
So.
All those in favor?